Scheduled Planning Commission for October 16, 2025. To order, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Good morning. Rachel Layton for staff. Changes to the agenda were published late yesterday. If the board hasn't had time to review them, I'm happy to go over them.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Schenk, is there anything from the county attorney's office?
No changes, sir.
First order of business is approval of September 11th, 2025 minutes. Any discussion needed? We have a motion by Mr. Essender, a second by Ms. Gay. Passes five to zero. Oh, six. Six is there. Sorry about that. Let's move on to citizen comments. This is in consideration for future agenda items that are not on today's agenda. Each person is limited to three minutes. Please step forward. Do you have anything to discuss? At this time, I want to close citizen comments. If you plan on speaking today on most items, please stand and be sworn in. Even if you don't think you're going to speak, stand and get sworn in, please.
These are our hypothetical statements and representations we are about to make to the planning commission are truthful and accurate. Thank you, Miss Schenk. Please state your name, county of residence, and if you've been sworn.
Thank you. Please read in item one for the record.
Item number two, sorry, number one for the record is LDCT 25-06, ordinance 25-36, county-initiated land development code text amendment, recreational vehicles and mobile home parks. This is a legislative item, and this is to be continued to no date set and re-advertised.
Okay, so we need to open up for citizen comments, and then we can-
On the continuance, yes.
At this time, let's open this item up for citizen comments. Seeing none, let's close this item. And may I have a motion? Oh, wow. Motion passes six, zero. Please read item number two in.
This is a time certain item. This is East County Facilities PDPI 19-22, Perrin Z, Perrin G, Perrin R. This is Manti County is the applicant for this. This is, case planner is James McDevitt. It's a quasi-judicial item. It's a county-initiated rezon of approximately 126.33 acres, generally located north of State Road 70, east of Post Boulevard, east of Rangeland Parkway, and west of Uline Road, and commonly known as 5895 Post Boulevard, Bradenton, Manti County, Florida. This changes from A WPE ST, general agriculture, water said protection, Evers Special Treatment Overlay Districts to the PDPI Plan Development Public Interest Zoning District, retaining the WPE and ST overlay districts, amending zoning ordinance PDPI 1922 Perrin Z, Perrin G, and approving a revised general development plan for County Park to add 126.33 acres to the project for a total of 236.71 acres, and add such uses that are included but are not limited to county office space, public use facilities, libraries, sheriff's substation, EMS station, aquatic center, dog park, softball park, baseball complex, fields, concessions, park maintenance, recreational, sorry, racquetball, tennis stadium courts, pickleball stadium courts, locker room facilities, restrooms, multi-use building hotel, secondary storage barn, multipurpose fields, parking and stadium, and other associated facilities, gymnasium and accessory passive recreation trails, outdoor fitness equipment, fitness play landforms, plazas, destination playgrounds, and shade pavilions.
Thank you. Has there been any ex parte communication in this? Can we have a brief presentation of the applicant?
Good morning, members of the planning commission. Brian Parnell, one of the deputy county administrators for Manatee County. And I'll just kick this off and turn it over to Stantec or Katie with any technical questions that you might have. But after evaluating the non-developed land at Premier Sports Campus North, the sports and leisure services and tourism departments plan to recommend the following. In order to enhance the sports programming for our residents, as well as continue to generate out-of-town sports business that stimulates the local economy annually. Some of the options include, you've heard some of them, but some of the options I'll mention include, but are not limited to, two indoor sports venues that can host diverse sports programs, civic center and entertainment, up to a 200-key hotel, food and beverage options including wine and spirits, sports medical operation, including strength and conditioning, and up to three parking garages to support the activities on the site into the future. The increased density aligns with the county general development plan and would complement Premier Sports Campus South. So as we build out the park over the next five, 10 years or more, we want to ensure we have the options available to us to maximize its potential for the benefit of the county and its residents. So that's the why of what we're doing here. With that, I'll leave it if you have any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Good morning, chairman, commissioners. I'm Katie Labar with Stantec, representing Manatee County government today. And we do have before you East County facilities. This is a rezon application as well as an amendment to the general development plan for East County. And so we're rezoning 126.3 acres. As you can see on the screen, the southern half of the site to Plan Development Public Interest, so that it is consistent with the northern half, and incorporating that in the revised general development plan. This is the revised GDP, and it is absolutely a bubble plan. The intent of that is to ensure that there is flexibility over time for local government to determine what the most appropriate uses are, where they're to be located, so they can program the different recreational and government activities as demand exists and as things change over time. And so we have designed the site plan to ensure that it is compliant with all aspects of the Land Development Code and comprehensive plan. There are appropriate buffers identified across all of the different, all of the edges of the property. As you can see, we are bounded by four different roadways to the south State Road 70, to the west Post Boulevard, north is Rangeland Parkway, and then east is Eline Road. There are different adjacent uses. This is primarily in the heart of Lakewood Ranch, and so there's a lot of residential that exists all around the site. A future school site is located just west of this, just west of the park site. And so we anticipate some collaborative activities between the two different uses. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, like I said, and all aspects of the Land Development Code. We have a team of county staff, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about this request. We ask that you make a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions for the applicant?
Good morning. It's a fantastic project. I'd kill to have something like this in parish. But I know that you don't have a final design or anything like that. But like a baseball field has less impervious surfaces than an aquatic center. Do you plan on having a bunch of open, like, baseball fields, soccer fields, things like that?
Good morning. Molly White, Director of Sports and Leisure Services, and I have been sworn. Yes, the baseball and softball and additional soccer fields are part of the GDP for opportunities. Yes.
Any additional questions? Thank you. Let's open this up for public comment. Not seeing anybody step forward. Anything from staff refers to this?
Good morning. For the record, James McDevitt with Development Services. I have been sworn. Just one clarification. The applicant provided 200 for the number of hotel rooms. On the site plan is 300, just for that correction.
Thank you.
And I'll clarify my comments. My options are what we're sort of planning going after right now. But that's, thank, appreciate the clarification that we can go up to that.
Any additional comments from the applicant? Can I get a motion from the commission?
Yeah, so if the motion, so we started this a couple months ago. The motion, or can please state the motion verbally, then we'll put it up on the board because we don't want to anticipate whether or not it's passed or failed.
Okay. So Ms. Kiba. Just say you're approving.
Motion to approve.
So we have a motion by Ms. Kiba, second by Ms. Gay, and please cast your votes. Motion passes six to zero. Thank y'all. Can we have item number three read in the record?
This is PDMU 15-04 Perrin G Perrin R2 Robinson Gateway GDP Amendment. MW Gateway Development LLC, Bakersfield Health System, Inc., TLVRESFR2 Palmetto Owner LLC, and Mahaffey Associates Robinson Gateway LLC, quasi-judicial. Laura Gonzalez is your case planner.
Thank you. Has there been any ex parte communication in this? Not seeing any. May we have a brief presentation by the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Ed Vogler. I have been sworn. I'm from Manatee County. And I wanted to just give you a little brief history, and then Paige is going to complete our presentation. My partners and I are developing 300 acres at I-75 and Moccasin Walla Road in North County. Many of you know and maybe remember my partner, Bill Robinson, who was one of the visionaries for the Robinson Preserve in Northwest Bradenton. And he also made a generous gift of that property to the county. But he also has owned this property since 1989, and he's had a vision for this property and always wanted a hospital north of the river because one didn't exist. And so now we have a hospital under construction right now. And Bill's wife Peggy and his children, Will Robinson, Wes Parks, and I are completing this project consistent with his vision. But because the property is adjacent to an interstate, we always understood and believed that a facility like a Wawa, for example, would be a great fit, both for the interstate users and the neighborhood. And so we also knew from our research that a Home Depot was one of the most sought-after operators, particularly when they're embedded in the same project as 2,000 residential users. And so this came very important to us, and we've been working together for a while with those users. What we did not know is we did not intentionally strike through the words "gas pump" and "equipment" in our list of users that we had approved in 2015. And it just was an oversight. But we had a neighborhood meeting, and there were some questions answered, or questions made, and I want to make sure I speak to them so that people can hear these answers. The hospital and the luxury apartments are under construction. The internal roadway network on the 300 acres is virtually complete, almost complete, internal roadway network. The project has vested transportation trips. It is a development of regional impact, approved in 2015. And so all of those trips on the roadway have been accounted for and are vested through at least 2034. We entered into a local development agreement with Manatee County in 2023. We paid proportionate share contribution to the roadway improvements of $1,418,170. This means that all of the trips for the Wawa, the gas pumps, the Home Depot, and everything are fully and completely vested. We're not putting new trips on that road. And we are collaborating today with Manatee County on the widening of Moccasin Walla Road from two lanes to four lanes, and that work is going to commence in January, if not before. So this is a very technical amendment, but we take it incredibly seriously because it's important to us. And I'd like Paige to complete our presentation.
Good morning, board members. Paige Estegaribia. I'm a planner with CNS, and I'm also a Manatee County resident, and I've been sworn. I'm just going to take you quickly through the project and through our application. This is our team, the applicant's MW Gateway, as Mr. Vogler described. Clint Cuffel is the engineer, myself is the planner, and Bassett Alley and Baba Grusa are traffic engineers from Gimli Horn. This is an aerial showing where the project is located. You can see that it's east of Interstate 75 and north of Moccasin Walla Road. And this is some photos of the current status of construction out there. Current future land use is MU, PSP1, and UF3, and the zoning is PDMU. This is a graphic showing our general development plan. The only difference in this plan and the prior approved plan is this plan actually shows the agreed-upon access points for the project. So in the interim period between the last approval and this application, staff has agreed upon these access points. We wanted to reflect those in this graphic. As Mr. Vogler described, our main request is to, for lack of a better word, unstrike the uses that were stricken in error from our prior approval. The gas pumps use, the equipment sales and rentals heavy, and the equipment sales and rentals light uses are typical permitted uses in PDMU. But for some reason, we're stricken in error from our last approval. And why are we asking for the gas pump use? So it is permitted, as I said before, in PDMU, but it was marked through on our proffered schedule in error. One of the questions that arose from staff during the development review period was the distance between the hospital and the gas pumps. And so the code actually provides that there should be sufficient distance, but it doesn't really give you a number or a range of what that distance is. And so at direction of staff, I went through and looked at facilities around Manatee County. And you can see that the code section not only describes hospitals, it also describes things like playgrounds, schools, churches. So I went through and on GIS did rough measurements of different facilities and their relationship to nearby gas stations. And so you can see these gas stations are some examples of the proximities that are in Manatee County now. And we're requesting, I mean, our proposed pump distance is 1,341 linear feet, so it's about a quarter of a mile away. There's also very few gas stations in the area right now. You have your gas station, it's the Circle K, which is three miles away at the intersection of Moccasin Walla and 41. There is a gas station about 1.2 miles away on the north side of Moccasin Walla and on the west side of 75. There's also a gas station that's under construction on the south side of Moccasin Walla and on the east side of 75. And so our gas station would fit perfectly for those patrons that are coming from the east, going west, and trying to get on the interstate, because that would eliminate any type of U-turn that they might have to do to get gas. So why are we asking for the equipment rental heavy and light uses? We, Home Depot, these are for Home Depot, the retail Home Depot use is already a permitted use. This is simply so that that facility can offer equipment, sales, and rentals for heavy and light equipment. Again, this was also marked through on the proffered schedule in error. So these are some, per the information that we've been given from Home Depot. This is their, they are going through their own development review and site plan review process with Manatee County. But per this current information that we have, this is their proposed rental storage area locations. And this is a list of some of the equipment that they plan to rent on the site. So in summary, there's no changes at all proposed to any of the open space setbacks, no changes to the approved heights, no specific approvals, and no changes to the already existing screening buffers and roadway buffers. This will not exceed any of the already approved trips. There's also no changes to the approved uses. We're simply asking to allow these three additional uses, basically unstrike them from the already permitted, as already permitted uses in PDMU. So that completes our presentation. We're available for any questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions for the applicant?
Just a quick question, since there are so many residences surrounding this area. The storing of equipment, no issue, but you had repair in there, and I think it had something limited to four service bays. What is being done to mitigate noise from repairing equipment? Because ratchet sounds really scary.
Commissioner, I don't know about repair. I don't think they do, they conduct any repair there.
Okay, so we're not doing any heavy equipment repair?
No, repair at all. But the second answer I'd like to complete, to make sure it's a complete answer. So those pieces of equipment are placed on their ground near the street where citizens can see them and come and use them on the weekend, you know?
No, I don't have, I don't have an issue with that at all. I just thought, when I read through it, it was repair, and I've lived close by.
Not repair. And so the building itself creates the biggest-
Barrier.
Barrier, right?
Any additional questions for applicant? Let's open this up for public comment. Please step forward. Let's close public comment. Anything from staff?
Good morning, commissioners. Laura Gonzalez with the staff, and I have been sworn. If you have any question, I'm happy to answer, but I agree with the applicant's presentation.
I think we're good. Thank you. Applicant closing, I think. May we entertain a motion and please- Motion to approve. Mr. Essender?
Motion to approve.
So we have a motion by Jeff Esslinger and consecutive by Ms. Prosser. And please cast your votes. Motion passes six to zero. Please read in item number four to the record.
Item number four is PDR 24-38 Perrin Z Perrin P. Christian Berry Rezone, Christian Berry Acquisitions LLC is the owner. This is a quasi judicial item with Lindsay Craig as the planner. This is a rezone of approximately 10 acres, generally located 1,350 feet south of the southeast corner of 9th Avenue and 99th Street Northwest, Bradenton, Manatee County, within and retaining the coastal overlay districts from A1 Agricultural Suburban, 8.48 acres, and Residential Single Family RSF1, 1.52 acres to PDR Plan Development Residential, retaining the overlay and approving a preliminary site plan for up to 10 single family residential units.
Thank you. Has there been any expert high communication in reference to this? This is a presentation upon request. Can we have a brief presentation by the applicant?
Absolutely. Chairman and members of the Plant Commission, my name is Jack Weber. I reside in Sarasota County and I have been sworn in. Land Acquisition Manager for Neal Signature Homes. Also with me here this morning is Ivory Matthews, who's our Vice President of Community Affairs. And as has been read, we are here petitioning to seek approval for rezoning of a 10 acre parcel located at 603 99th Street Northwest in Manatee County from A1 to RSF1, A1 RSF1 to residential plan development. We're excited about the opportunity. If you're not familiar with Neal Signature Homes, we have a couple of communities also in the area just across the street. We have Estuary, which was developed a few years back. And we also have Tideline, which is just to the north of this parcel. These are semi-custom homes that will be built on the property. We also have here this morning, who will be doing the presentation, will be Paige Estegariba, who's our planner, Nathan Kraut, who's our land engineer. And if necessary, we have Becca Bond, who's our traffic engineer, and Chris Kennedy, who's our environmental specialist, and also Ed Vogler, legal counsel. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paige.
Good morning again, board members. Paige Estegariba, planner with ZNS Engineering. I'm a Manatee County resident and I've been sworn. This application, Mr. Weber did a great job going through our team. This is our team, again, applicant and owner, Christian Berry Acquisitions LLC. This is a graphic showing where this project is located. You can see it's on the southern part, southern side of 99th. Palmasola Point subdivision to the south, Estuary to the east. You have Robinson Gateway to the northwest, sorry, Estuary to the west, Robinson Gateway to the northwest and Palmasola Bay is to the southeast. Future land use is RES1 and the zoning, the current zoning is A1 and RSF1. This graphic just shows a general idea of the densities in this area. And this is just showing the low density residential development that is in this area. You have the Estuary, again, to the east, which is 0.99 dwelling units per acre. Palmasola Point, which is approximately 1.39 dwelling units per acre. Tideline, 1.02 dwelling units per acre and Tides End, which is 1.94 dwelling units per acre. And this is a picture of our plan, our PSP. We are proposing 10 lots gated subdivision, private. And this is just a rundown of what we're actually proposing. 10 single family residential units. They're all single family detached with a minimum lot width of 75 feet. The proposed density is 1.0 dwelling units per acre, which is in line with the future land use in that area. Proposed building height is two stories. And with Estuary right across the street, a rezone to PDR is a logical transition. You have PDR right across the street. It's just going to go right across 99th. Proposed gated access is agreed upon by Public Works staff. We are continuing the low density residential development pattern that's in that whole area. 20-foot roadway buffer proposed along 99th, 20-foot green belt buffer along the north and the south, and the 15-foot green belt buffer along the east. Those are more than what the green belt buffer requirements are. And we're exceeding open space requirements. We did hold a neighborhood workshop for this project. It was in person on March the 5th. And about 20 area residents attended. We discussed the lift station access. We also have worked with the Estuary community across the street to get lift station access for our community. We explained that all the storm water will be treated on site. And the neighbors did express some concerns about flooding. So in response, we've done a high level drainage analysis for this project. So with that, I'll turn it over to Becca, our traffic engineer.
Good morning. Becca Bond, Transportation Engineer with Kimble Horn and I have been sworn. A traffic study was not required for this site. Transportation planning staff provided our project with a traffic waiver. However, we did run the trip generation. This proposed development is anticipated to generate 11 vehicle trips in the PM peak hour. Turn lanes are not warranted at the project driveway. And the addition of project traffic is not anticipated to create deficient roadway segments. 9th Avenue Northwest and 99th Street Northwest have adequate capacity to support the development. And I'll hand it off to our civil engineer.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nathan Kraut with ZNS Engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Florida and I have been sworn. I'd like to take just a minute to outline the steps that we've taken to alleviate the stormwater concerns for this project. As Paige mentioned, we've performed a construction plan level engineering analysis and we're committed to a stormwater system that exceeds the currently required stormwater regulations in the county. We've coordinated with your staff and designed a stormwater system based on the NOAA 14 rainfall amounts. And you can see there on the chart the difference between the current regulations and the NOAA regulations. In the pink, your current, which is eight compared to the 8.91 and the 10 compared to the 12.5. So it's a substantial increase that we have taken upon ourselves to implement here. There will be no increase compared to the pre-development discharge rate. In addition, we are providing 150% water quality treatment per Manatee County and a net improvement nutrient analysis per SWIFT mud standards. The site was designed with consideration of the 100-year, obviously the NOAA rainfall storm events, but also the 100-year FEMA flood elevations. Based on those two analyses or those two separate criteria, the maximum pond stage based on that 100-year rainfall event was in a design high of 3.18 feet. Whereas per the FEMA flood elevation, which considers coastal storm surge due to the proximity to Palmasola Bay, the base flood elevation is nine. Therefore, the proposed finished floor elevations on this site are at elevation 10.4, which far exceeds the required elevation. Our team has worked very hard to provide a site design that exceeds the required criteria and will have no adverse impacts on surrounding properties. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have once the presentation is over. And with that, I'll turn it over to the remainder of my team to finish the presentation.
Chris Kennedy, Environmental Scientist with Kimble Horn. The property was historically cleared for agriculture. It's currently being utilized as a mango farm. Bountiful listed species surveys were conducted on the property and no listed species were identified during these surveys. There are no wetlands located within the, in the project area. There are a few upland excavated surface water features that were upgraded for agriculture, which you can see on the map in front of you. There is a 50-foot wetland buffer proposed from the offside wetland to the south. And that well and boundary has been reviewed by the Southwest Florida Water Management District.
So we are asking for one specific approval request per LDC Section 10016A1C1. The sidewalks are required within two miles of any elementary or middle school. This development is within two miles of King Middle School. However, we're requesting sidewalks only on the side of the street where the houses are. There's, you know, we believe that will provide plenty of safe access for the residents within the development. Just some project positives and some key points. Again, low density development and keeping with the rest of the low density development that's in that area. In response to school board concerns, we are working, the applicant is working with the county staff to try and establish a sidewalk connection from our project to the current CIP project along 9th. There's no wetland buffer impacts, no proposed traffic impacts. We have a traffic waiver. We're exceeding open space requirements and exceeding buffer requirements. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Vogler for conclusion and questions.
Thank you very much. I didn't anticipate concluding, but we are concluded.
Thank you. Is there any questions for the applicant? Not seeing any. At this time, let's open it up for public comment. If you have any comments on this project, please step forward. Please state your name, county residence, and that you have been sworn.
Greg Geraldson, Manatee County. I've been sworn. Just to rebut a couple of things that were just said, low density. First of all, we are farming right to the north of the mango grove, of the Christian Berry property. So we farm the five acres right there. And we have been farming the property right to the west of the new development tideline. So there's definitely impacts. They mentioned low density. Well, you're putting houses right next to each other like sardines because there's so much fill has to be put in to dig a lake. If the houses are still, I mean, they're right next to each other. So it's not really low density, even though it's one to an acre, I guess. Also, they didn't mention, they mentioned the Estuary to the west, but Orbis Nursery has 30 acres right to the east. And of course, we are right to the north. So it's hardly compatible with the area, you know? And digging a lake definitely affects the water table on our farm. You know, it sucks the water out while they're digging the lake. And then, you know, it doesn't get filled back in. So we have no water table on the farm. Okay, our family has been, you know, we leased, we actually leased the mango farm from the Neils. And we've done that for three years. So we're well familiar with the property. It's flooded with saltwater in the last three saltwater events. Hurricane Idalia, there was a cold front in December of that year. And then Hurricane Helene flooded it with saltwater. Also, I was thinking, Mr. Kraut said something about drainage analysis. Well, drainage analysis handles freshwater. I mean, the retention ponds handle freshwater. But saltwater is right to the south of this property. You just come, you know, there's nothing stopping it. So to keep, and the thing I'm thinking too is the whole, you got Palmasola Bay, you got Pareco Bay to the west, you got the river to the north. And if saltwater, if any storm comes in, all that area with mangroves pushes saltwater in and it floods. You know, there's just, and then the other thing, which I'll get to. First of all, you know, my presentation, I guess, is more about, you know, keeping the mangoes. It's about keeping our homes and keeping our farmland. And homes flooded out there. My parents' home on 99th Street, the Bystrm's home on 9th Avenue, and Nick Baden's property, all flooded, which hadn't flooded in, what? Our parents' house was built in 1914, never flooded that we know of. And ever since we've lived out there, we have never flooded. And I'll get to the reason why here in a second. Hurricane Helene changed many things. It opened my eyes to what was happening to Palmasola. And I hate to use this analogy, but it's like a, you know, a frog in a pot of water. And you turn it on and it starts boiling and the frog doesn't know it. Well, we're sitting out there, you know, all this development's happening, all this property's getting elevated. And now we're in the bowl and we're, we're starting to get flooded. And you don't even think about it till it happens. And now it's happening and it has to stop. You know, keep elevating property, bringing fill out is no good for the rest of the residents that are out there. It's just going to get worse. So it has to stop somewhere and this is the time to stop it. You know, Orbis Nursery, they had 150,000 poinsettias in their nursery. And Tideline has gone in across the street to the north. That was our flood plain to the, you know, where Tideline is, where Hawthorne Park is, where the preserve is now. All those properties are elevated, Tides End, the loop. So now we're in a bowl and we used to be the highest property out there. And Orbis Nursery's plants actually floated, tried to float across the street, got blocked by Tideline, floated down to the west, 9th Avenue, into our farm. And also they floated all the way down to the Botanical Park to the north. That's how much current there was because it was being blocked. Otherwise, we have flood plain. You know, where Hawthorne Park was, Tideline, that was all flood plain for us. We used to be the highest place out there. And now we're the lowest, or getting to be the lowest. And it will be the lowest if these projects keep getting, you know, passed. So it's time to put an end to them. You know, we, I would say with Helene, we would have still had flooding, but it wouldn't have been as severe. I don't think our, my sister's house where my parents lived on 99th and Bystrm's house, I'm a business owner. I don't know if you can give me a little more time?
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Okay. But those houses had never flooded, like I said, in 100 years. They're raised up on blocks. And the water, because it got blockaded or dyked, you know, it started, it just kept going up higher till it got over and just came in our driveways and down 99th. And that's why those houses flooded this time. They, they had never flooded before. So we would have had maybe a foot of saltwater, not four feet. So, you know, I think it's time to stop, you know, even fill coming in is raising other properties. And unless everybody does the same thing, we're still going to keep getting lower. The farmland flooded with saltwater. Our farm, you know, the farm next to the mango grove, Christian Berry's flooded with like four or five feet of saltwater. The farm right, you know, at our property, 9812, that flooded with saltwater. And as far as I know, that had never happened before either. So it's time to put an end to this, you know, digging lakes and putting the fill up and then making, you know, it just makes a barrier for the water to spread out. So that's, thanks for considering. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any else, anybody else for the public? At this time, let's close public comment. Staff report?
Do you want the full presentation or just rebuttal?
I think mainly flooding, I guess.
Okay.
Flooding and maybe a little bit of traffic.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Craig. I'm with Development Services. I'm a planner and I have been sworn. Paige did a great job explaining the entire project. Again, 10 acres in Palmasola, east of 99th Street. And you wanted to go to the flooding slide?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Here's the picture of the flood plain. The project is completely in the 1% annual flood hazard zone with a flood elevation of nine. And what was the other one that you wanted to discuss?
The traffic.
Traffic. This is the transportation link capacity analysis. The existing class is C. The adopted will be D and it remains C. The developer will not have to improve 99th Street. And, yeah.
Any additional questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have the applicant's engineer to discuss flooding?
Yeah, we'd like to make a short rebuttal. First, some context. Helene as a hurricane was one of the most extraordinary events that has affected our community. But Neal Communities has responded to this in all of our projects. And we are leading the development community forward in extraordinary requests that you heard presented to you. We've voluntarily adopted a higher standard and have designed our projects to that. And that's very, very significant, as you've heard. We admire and enjoy the company of Greg Geraldson. He and his family have been there for a long time. And we've built around them our two major projects. Our two major projects that were mentioned, we're not aware of any impacts from our development. And so we've communicated with the Orbans Nursery many times over the years. NEAL Communities is a good neighbor. We have designed this carefully, and we are very confident in our design, and we submit that to you. But I'd also like our civil engineer to make a comment about further flooding questions.
Thank you, Ed. So to reiterate what Ed said, you know, the Geraldson Farm, the family is a dear friend of, of the community, and we, we have a huge respect for them, and I live a mile from here. I know exactly what he's talking about. That water during Helene came up, and it was, you know, six, seven feet above normal water level in Palmasola Bay. And so Orbans Nursery, these sites, this was a tidal event. And so when you talk about floodplain impacts, there are rivi-reen floodplains from rivers overflowing, which that demarcating line is I-75 eastward, okay? In this case, everything west of that is considered tidal floodplain, and there is no way to offset a tidal impact of a hurricane event when the Gulf of Mexico rises six feet. There is no way to stop it, and that has nothing to do with your stormwater pond, or your pipes, or your ditches. That water is simply coming up all of Palmasola Bay, all of the Gulf of, everything. And so while I'm sympathetic to that situation and that event, we all are, that has nothing to do with the stormwater facility that we've designed, which meets and actually exceeds the stormwater criteria set forth in your standards. So I'd be happy to answer any follow-up questions.
What is the thought on the retention ponds affecting groundwater wells?
When they construct a stormwater pond, they do de-water it. In order to dig a pond 10, 12, you know, sometimes 20 feet deep, depending on the soil types, they de-water in order to do, in order to continue to dig. And that does have an impact. You know, the further, the closer you are to the site, it does have an impact. And I think that's something that we can try and work through as, as far as the construction techniques to try and not impact him. I'd be curious to know if he's on reclaim or well, or how that impacts, and I think that's something that we can explore. There really is no other way to construct a pond that I'm aware of, but again, I would be happy to investigate that further.
Does it affect the well after construction?
No, no, no. So when you do that, it's a temporary impact. And so if they're digging that pond for a month, and then they would, once it's dug to the bottom, they would stop de-watering, and that, that, that water table would come back up. So certainly, no matter how you look at it, it's a temporary impact.
Any additional questions for the applicant?
Can, I have a question about sidewalks. So the elementary school, and yes, this is a, a small subdivision, but the elementary school students, they need to walk to school. There's no complete sidewalk network for them to walk, and then there's difficulty with the busing. Can you just clarify how the sidewalks will work?
Yep.
The parish community high school kids were walking in ditches to go to school.
No, 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 that, that's a legit question, and we, we've anticipated it, and there's a direct answer to that. Manatee County has a project all the way from 75th Street to 99th Street to connect a multi-use trail, basically. Bunch, bunch, parts of it are completed. All the parts on our communities that we've built over the time are completed. And we've entered into an agreement with Manatee County to extend from our tideline project all the way east to 99th Street. That's the CIP project that was mentioned. And so our project's a little bit south of Ninth Avenue. So what we're working with Manatee County is to build a sidewalk on the very eastern edge of the Robinson Preserve to connect to that CIP project. And that, that was explained, but the context is lost. So we'll have a sidewalk in our planning from our community to the, the 99th Street intersection and Ninth Avenue. That'll go all the way to the school. So it's the best you can do, and we're doing it. Thank you.
I actually have a visual of the project. If you can pull up that presentation, please. Okay, so this is a visual of the CIP project. They are installing a multi-use trail and a five-foot wide sidewalk to the north of Ninth Avenue. They will be installing a 10-foot wide sidewalk on the south side, and then this is what it would look like. They would be extending the sidewalk north of Estuary and also installing a flashy mid-block crossing at the entrance of the site. Thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Closing by the applicant? Anything? Deliberation or a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Gave, second by Mr. Ziegler. Please cast your votes. Motion passes six to zero. Can we take a 10-minute break? Okay, thank you. So we'll, 10 o'clock. Thank you.
Item number five in the record.
Yes, item number five is PDPI 2512 Perrin Z. Perrin G. Lake Manatee EMS GDP with rezone. Manatee County is the owner. Our case planner is Alicia Henry. This is a county initiated rezone of approximately 10.16 acres on county-owned property located north of State Road 64 and Dam Road intersection and commonly known as 1501 and no number assigned Dam Road. Bradenton, Manatee County, Florida, from A S T P M, sorry, W P dash M, A S T W P M, General Agricultural, Special Treatment Watershed Protection, Lake Manatee count, uh, Lake Manatee Overlay and Conservation, S T W P M Conservation, Special Treatment Watershed Protection, Lake Manatee Overlay to PDPI, Plan Development Public Interest zoning district retaining the overlay districts approving a general development plan for one, an existing government office, Natural Resources Department slash Quattlebaum House of 6,342 square feet, two, an existing EMS station of 1,196 square feet, and three, 4,740 square feet of a public use facility EMS station for a total of 12,278 square feet and approving a schedule of permitted and prohibited uses as voluntarily proffered by the applicant.
Thank you. Has there been any expedite communication in this? May we have the applicant's presentation, please?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nicole West-Morland with BGE, and I have been sworn. I'm a resident of Sarasota County, and I am here on behalf of Manatee County's Property Management Department to discuss the Lake Manatee EMS station. Here's our project team, several of whom have joined us today and can answer technical questions as they arise. The project site is located north of Highway 64 on the north side of Dam Road. It's situated between the county water treatment facility, the state park, and Lake Manatee. This application is requesting a rezoning from agriculture and conservation to PDPI to support the expansion of EMS services and the existing uses on site. The applicant has offered a schedule of permitted and prohibited uses limited to public use facility and utility use. The site consists of two parcels on Dam Road totaling just over 10 acres. As mentioned, there is an existing EMS station and the existing Quattlebaum House, which currently houses the county's Natural Resources Department. There are wetlands on the northeast edge of the site adjacent to Lake Manatee as well as flood zones. The current zoning is of the site is agriculture for the majority of the site, and on the southern section, it's conservation. There are overlays with this property which will be retained, and the surrounding zoning to the left includes PDPI, agriculture, and to the southeast is conservation and recreational open space where the state park is. As a frame of reference, we've overlaid the zoning on the existing site to illustrate that the existing uses, the existing EMS station and the existing Quattlebaum House are both currently located within the conservation zoning district. The future land use is public semi-public, and the majority of the surrounding land uses are the same, again with the exception of the state park as recreational open space. The GDP with this application proposes a new EMS station with landscape screening buffer along the south and southeast boundaries and a roadway buffer along Dam Road. A 30-foot building setback is required and a specific approval request will be provide, will provide relief for the existing EMS station, which is currently within that setback. The GDP proposes a single access from Dam Road. The existing entry that's currently located on site will be removed, and the existing uses will be serviced by the proposed drive, access drive. The GDP provides a minimum 30% open space and a 50-foot wetland buffer. Looking at the surrounding land uses and policies within the project area, the adjacent uses of water treatment plant, recreation, open space, and the residential across Dam Road. The county's public semi-public land use categorization requires a reza, a zoning of PD in order for development to occur on the site. The proposed buffering is consistent with policies and the LDC, and this application allows expansion of public services that currently exist on the site. The specific goals that of the comprehensive plan that align with this application include goal 2.2 related to the public semi-public land use categorization that requires planned develope, development to be the planned development zoning in order for development to occur, and goal 2.6 for screening, buffering, and setbacks. And to conclude, we'd like to formally request a, your recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners to rezone this project site from agricultural and conservation to PDPI, Plan Development Public Interest. As the rezoning is consistent with comprehensive plan policies, the GDP meets the requirements of the LDC, and the facility's expansion will expand public services for the community, and it will better serve the community with this expansion of EMS. And I can answer any questions or call upon our design team if there's anything technical to discuss.
Yes, any questions?
Just a quick question on, I, I understand the need for the rezoning of the agricultural section for the new proposed EMS facility. Why the change of the conservation area? If we're going to build a new EMS, why do we need to change the conservation?
So that the existing uses are in compliance with the comp plan.
So we've been out of compliance?
Correct.
Any additional questions?
Yes, please. Um, that was basically what I wanted, wanted to ask. The old EMS station, when the new one is built, are you, do you plan on still utilizing the old EMS?
Yes, that will, that will remain.
Okay, okay. And then there was a neighborhood workshop summary, but yet there were no comments attached. Were there comments from your neighborhood workshop?
I will have to defer to the county plant project manager on the neighborhood workshop as I was not in attendance.
All right, thank you.
Good morning, Sydney CMR, Manatee County Construction Services, Manatee County resident, and I've been sworn in. There were no formal comments issued written out during the neighborhood meeting. None were provided.
Were they supportive?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
May we have staff's presentation?
Good morning, Alethea here for staff, and I will be presenting for Lake Manatee EMS GDP with rezone. Okay, so the request is to rezone 10.16 acres from a general agriculture and conservation to PDPI, which is Plan Development Public Interest with a GDP. Site is also located in the special treatment and Lake Manatee Watershed Protection Overlay and has a schedule of prohibited and prohibited uses proffered by the applicant. If this project is approved, it will be permitting a two-story, 4,740-square-foot additional building for an EMS station and will retain an existing government office of 6,342 square feet and an EMS station of 1,196 square feet. So here's a bit of history. So since the adoption of the comprehensive plan, the site was in the future land use category of agriculture rural, and in 2023, there were the comp plan amendment changing the future land use category to public semi-public. The zoning district since the adoption of the Land Development Code was under general agriculture, and in 1991, a portion of the site was rezoned to conservation. And here we have an aerial showing the general location of the site, which is located north of the intersection for State Road 64 and Dam Road within Bradenton. And here we have a list of some of the features for this general development plan. The site, again, is 10.16 acres. They are proposing an additional public use facility, which is the EMS station. The new EMS station will be, again, two stories in height. They'll retain the government office and the already existing EMS station. Total proposed is 12,278 square feet, and that will have a FAR of 0.03. And the site will be exceeding the required 30% open space. So the, there is a specific approval request, and it's requesting a reduced setback of eight feet for only the existing building from the required 30-foot setback. This particular building was actually constructed in 1975, and this is prior to our adoption of our land development code. Again, the future land use category is PSP1, and we are, and this particular site is located within the boundaries of the FDA. The zoning district for the area to the north and also to the east is conservation. To the west, we have general agriculture. To the south, we have recreation open space. And for the surrounding uses, to the north and east, we have vacant county property. To the west, we have agriculture land with single-family detached dwellings. And to the south, we also have single-family detached dwellings. This particular site is within general agriculture and conservation, and men, as mentioned before, it is within the special treatment overlay and the Manatee Watershed Protection Overlay. And on this slide, I'll be giving you a little bit more information pertaining to the overlay and the intent of these overlays. So the project that is being proposed does not violate any of the criteria that is to be met for the special treatment overlay, so it is not applicable. For the Lake Manatee Reservoir Watershed Protection Overlay, the intent for this particular overlay is to protect the quality and quantity of potential and existing potable water supplies within public surface water reservoirs, provide performance standards and best management practices designed to achieve such water quality and quantity protection, provide additional protection for specific areas of or ecological resource in the county that are especially sensitive by limiting or monitoring uses such as industrial mining activities, major earth moving, hazardous waste, landfills, feedlots, and aviation facilities. So here we have a bit of information on the stormwater. So site is within, again, the Lake Manatee watershed. Site is required to provide 150% treatment requirement. No flow reductions are required. No improvements are proposed in the FEMA flood hazard areas. So for the transportation link capacity analysis, below we have a chart that shows the adopted level of service and the future level of service for the nearest thoroughfare. The existing level of service is C, the adopted level of service is D, and the future level of service with the project implemented will be C. For our positive aspects, the public use facility, which is the EMS station addition, will continue to provide emergency service to the general public. Applicant have declared a public use facility, the EMS station, as it is required by the PSP1 future land use category. There are no wetland impacts proposed with this project. No state or federal listed species were observed on site. The site design will provide 0.5 acres of upland preservation area. The site design will provide 1.10 acres of native plant communities. The project will minimize emergency response times with this emergency EMS station that is being proposed. We found no key negative aspects for this proposed project. So for our mitigating measures, a schedule of, a schedule of permitted and prohibited uses have been proffered, which is taking into account the sensitive surrounding areas such as the Lake Manatee Rethor watershed protection overlay and the adjacent Lake Manatee State Park. During time of PSP FSP, plans will further be reviewed for potential impacts to the surrounding area. Appropriate buffering, landscaping, and design shall be utilized as a mechanism to maintain the water quality and the watershed protection of Lake Manatee overlay. So staff finds the request can be found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and in compliance with the applicable provisions of the Land Development Code. Any questions?
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I've got a couple more questions here. So we're making, again, I'm a, generally a little confused here. We've got county-owned area that's zoned A to the northwest. We're trying to change the zoning of what's a conservation area just to keep an obsolete building from 1973 that we also need to do a setback on. I, I don't think this is very well thought out, to be quite honest with you. So my question is, why?
Okay, so as it was stated before, there are some requirements with being located within conservation. We are out of compliance with those requirements. So therefore, we do have to go ahead and change the zoning district over to PDPI. Also, I do have to mention the future land use category is PSP1. Within the PSP1, future land use category, you do have, it is required for you to propose a public development project in order for you to develop the site within that particular future land use category.
Sure, and you've got that on there. You've got that in the new EMS, EMS station. I, I don't know, I think this is, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So you did inquire about the general agriculture that is to the north. The, where they will be proposing to do the, the construction to develop the site for the EMS station will not be exceeding the boundaries for, for where they need to have the EMS station, so it's not necessary for us to change or do a rezone for that particular site that is northwest of the project.
But we're, I, I guess I'll, I'll save it for my final comment, but I, my, my comment is that we're, we're asking for forgiveness on something that, quite frankly, I think we're turning backwards. I'll, I'll leave it at that right now.
I was wondering that, too. The existing 1975 building, was it ever considered to demolish that and to build a bigger one, one building EMS building, or?
I think that should be answered by the applicant.
Oh, true.
Yeah.
Yep, Ms. Layton?
Yes, I do want to offer a point of clarification on the comprehensive plan. So I know it's very confusing what we're looking at today. If, Alicia, if you could put your aerial map back up, please. So the conservation zoning district does overlay portions of those existing buildings. Why they put them there in 1991 when those buildings were previously approved prior to that is, we, we don't have that history today. So because the future land use category of preliminary site, preliminary, sorry, public semi-public one is, it requires you to have to go plan development, no matter what. So we made that change in 2023 to change that future land use category. So today is, in 2025, they came back and they wanted that change, so we have to bring the entire property back into conformance with the code. So that's why we're doing that, making that change and trying to bring all of that into conformance so it's no longer an illegally non-conforming use on that property. So this is the cleanup effort that would be required as part of that land development, I mean, future land use change anyway. So I hope that offers a little clear, clarity.
Any additional questions for staff?
Yeah, I got one. This may be repetitive, but what, is there plans for the old EMS building? Can you repeat that if I missed that?
There is no depth, in-depth information that can be provided as to what they will be doing with the existing EMS station, but it will be utilized.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for staff? Let's open this up for public comment. Please step forward, state your name, county you live in, and that you have been sworn.
Okay.
Yes, good morning, Mark Van Der Ee, Manatee County. I have not been sworn.
If there's anyone else in the audience who has not been sworn and can speak today, can stand and raise your hand. These were referred with the factual statements and representations you're about to make to the planning commission are truthful and accurate.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, again, Mark Van Der Ee, Manatee County. I have been sworn, representing the Waterline Road Preservation Group this morning. And, yeah, there was a neighborhood meeting conducted, and there were a lot of objections to what was happening here with this EMS station. I sent an email to the county and with recommendations and questions, and I did not really get it. I had a quick response, although then the B O C C will hear it on, in November. One of the questions or requests was that we have another neighborhood meeting because there were many questions that were being raised that the people, the county folks at the, at the meeting could not answer. The, the staff report is woefully inadequate. To say that, to say that there are no negative aspects with this project is not a, is not accurate. There are many, many negative aspects with this project. aspects with this project. First of all, reversing the conservation zoning back to nonconservation, that's a negative aspect. We believe that that property is conservation because of the Quattlebaum House, and it was made that way to preserve that land, to keep it from being developed or overdeveloped or industrialized because of its adjacent nature with the water plant and the water aspects going on there with the reservoir. It's also on the other side, adjacent to the state park, and that's why we believe the conservation property was established. We also have a lot of issues with the fact that that property entrance is on a blind curve. Now, the present speed limit is 45 miles an hour. We've been in discussion, the neighborhood groups have been in discussion with the county to lower the speed limit, and they've agreed. The county's agreed, yeah, we're going to lower the speed limit. I don't know when it's going to be, if it's going to be next month or the month after, but there is in process a need to reduce the speed limit from 45. It's way too high for that land, that road, I mean. And the road is substandard. The road does not meet the minimum width requirements for the county in order for it to be determined a urban collector, which is established now. It's an urban collector. It's not an urban collector. It's not wide enough. The individual lane widths are not wide enough by 7% to 10% for it to be an urban collector. It can't handle the traffic that is being put on that road. Now, we raised this question about the substandard nature of the road back in 2013 to the county. We had engineering reports submitted, and the only thing the county's done in the past is approve more development to put more cars on that road. And there's a whole bunch more in the pipeline to be approved. They're going to put thousands of more cars on that road. It's a substandard road. It's not wide enough. It's got no shoulders. If ambulance is coming down that road, it's real hard now to pull over because we've got heavy traffic going in both directions. It's really, really hard to avoid the emergency vehicles. Now, the folks at the neighborhood meeting did not object to the fact that there would be an EMS station there. That's not the problem. The problem is the process and the configuration of what they're trying to do. It can be done, we believe, without removing the conservation property. It can be done with increasing the wetland buffers from 50 foot to 100 foot. Everybody in the scientific community would say that 100 foot is better, and the county has a chance here to lead. This is on Lake Manatee, on a reservoir. Why would we not exceed the minimum of 50 foot? Why wouldn't you not go to 100 foot? Because you have the property there. You can do it. It's doable. It's absolutely doable. Now, the night of the neighborhood meeting, it was a rainy night, and Waterline Road floods. There are three county permanent signs up on that road to warn that the road can be underwater. And the night of the neighborhood meeting, it was raining, and it was beginning to flood, and there was no access from the west side of Waterline Road to where the meeting was held. The meeting was held outdoors, by the way, and there was no real good mechanism for giving formal written comments during the meeting. So we ask that the decision on this be postponed until we can have another neighborhood meeting and our issues can be addressed, and that the roadway issues with the blind corner and the width of the road and the speed limit and the roadway flooding be fixed before proceeding with this development. And by the way, I might add that our understanding that there's already been a contract to develop and to construct this building, which is really undermining the quasi-judicial process because they're going to construct the building. They've already got the contract, I believe, and they haven't even gotten the rezoning approved. That's backwards. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? At this time, I'm closing public comment. Staff?
Can you put my presentation? Thank you. Yeah, okay. I would just like to give an... Okay, I thought my aerial gave a wider scope of the development in the area. So within this area off of State Road 64, we have had many residential subdivisions that have been approved. And as we know, we do have to put the welfare and the safety of those individuals that are now within this area. According to, and now I know that he said, we have already approved for the construction. That is, as you can see, we are going through the quasi-judicial process where we have to take into account the public's opinion and has to go through planning commissions, review, and then board. With the ratio of how many, if there are for that, for the population of this particular area, we do have to increase the size of the EMS station that is there and add an additional building in order to have adequate response in terms of emergency, if there are any type of emergency that needs to be addressed within the area. So of course, when the population go up, we do have to have those type of emergency responses in place to address any type of emergency if there is any to, that we need to address. So that's all I have to say.
Is the road insufficient in current standards, and is there any plan on improving it?
I will defer to Pony for that question.
Good morning. Pony Bonifis, Transportation Planning Section Manager. Traffic study was not submitted for this road because the tube generated will be so low, they are not significant. And the road is not failing. This road currently has capacity. And the citizen also has a comment about the functional classification. It's based on the 2035. It's a planning process. This road is considered as to be functionally urban collector based on the traffic volume that would be needed in this area and will be projected to be widened if it's needed at that time.
Is there any plans on widening it?
As I said, no. I don't have any knowledge of that.
Okay.
I can think of multiple fire stations, a couple just down the road from here on Rye, where they have the, like, the safety lights that will go off that are installed on Rye Road whenever a fire truck needs to leave, warning traffic that they're going to need to stop so that it can help, because that's also just a single two-lane road. And I think that that may be something, is that something we're looking at doing with this project in particular? I think that can maybe help alleviate some of the concerns of residents when it comes to an ambulance having to pull out to respond to emergency services and there not being a place for vehicles to pull off.
You're talking about Rye Wood and why they lie?
No, I'm talking about here on Dam Road with putting in an EMS station where we're going to have ambulances responding. Are we going to put up, similar to what they do at fire stations on two-lane roads, emergency signals that stop traffic so that an ambulance...
Yeah, that will be handled by traffic engineering. That's in every traffic line for the EMS. Our ambulances will be handled by traffic engineering, public works. They will have to review it, make sure it's appropriate to install it over there. Most likely, they'll have to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we have, yes, ma'am?
I would also like to mention for our attachment that we have in there in regards to the neighborhood workshop, there, a part of that summary, it does have information in regards to the concerns that was brought up at that neighborhood workshop. It was someone from our staff that was able to put together what she recollected from what was stated from the members, the members of the community that participated with this workshop.
That information's not on here for us. We just have the notice and the list of the addresses that were exempt.
Yeah, there's no summary.
Okay. So it was provided to agenda. I don't know how it didn't make it into that attachment, but it will be provided at time of board. Okay.
Thank you. Can we have the applicant for some questions? Reference to the road?
So the general development plan does take into account the classification of Dam Road as a thoroughfare, and there is a future right-of-way setback that is considered as part of the GDP. So it's being set aside for future construction to get to the full right-of-way width.
Does it, in current, does it meet current standards for an ambulance?
I'm going to have to defer to our traffic engineer, Michael Yates.
Good morning. Michael Yates with Palm Traffic, and I have been sworn. We did not get too far into that for the purposes of the GDP, this rezoning. However, the other sections of Waterline Road that I have looked at for other projects, they are 11-foot travel lanes, not 12-foot, which is what the county code requirement is. However, the Florida Department of Transportation has a Florida Design Manual that, as traffic engineers, we typically use for evaluating the road width conditions. That allows for, at 45 miles an hour posted speed limit, that allows for 11-foot travel lanes to be acceptable. So it is, I would say it is substandard to the county's 12-foot lane requirements, but it would not be out of the range of acceptable from a design perspective.
Is there shoulders to the road that people can get off the road to let the ambulance go by?
No, there's very, very limited shoulder out there. So there are roadway design constraints out there today. So the road doesn't meet full county standards. But from what got brought up was lane width requirements. And so that's the question I was answering for you.
I have a question, not for you, but just applicant in general. Thank you. I understand the idea behind the project and using existing county property and things like that, but we also have two fire stations on Rye Road. I believe we have one or two just east of Dam Road on State Road 64. Have we, with the concerns that residents have brought forward that we've talked about today, have we discussed going to those fire stations, renting EMS spaces from them versus moving forward with a project that we have not fully answered concerns on?
So I thank you for your question. As that speaks to the programming of the station and the surrounding emergency services, I'm going to have to defer to, if there's a planner from the county that can respond to that, or Sydney, because I don't have the knowledge of the expanded discussion of the capacity of other services.
Will there be any maintenance on ambulances and stuff at this facility also?
Sir, I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
I said, will there be any maintenance or repairs of ambulances at this facility?
As far as, right now, I do not believe there's any discussions about working with the fire department. So they're two different areas. Fire department, we're not under control with them. So there has been no discussions that I'm aware of. Sorry.
I understand that they're their own jurisdictions. That's why I was asking, because in many of the other areas throughout the county, we have agreements with them to house EMS units within the fire stations.
Okay. For this one, I'm not aware of any. In regards to, I think, what was your question about the maintenance?
Any repairs or maintenance on?
Repairs, maintenance, then we'll go to the fleet facility, and they do all the repairs on that 26th Street.
And you were at the meeting?
I was.
And how well was it attended? Was it outside in the rain, too?
There, at the Quattlebaum House, there's like a carport. So we were under the carport. We set up boards, and we provided forms for if you have comments, like, hey, if you have any questions, forms, or you want to make comments, please fill out the comment forms. And nobody filled out any comment forms.
And the road does flood during rains?
I actually took that road. Were you saying it was flooded? You couldn't get through? I came in from the west side, and I left through the west side, but it was flooding. Water was going over the road, but there were still vehicles going through, passing through.
Okay. Staff closing comment? Any applicant closing comment?
So can I make a motion to deny?
Ms. Van Der Ee, do you have any?
Or deliberate, yeah.
Before we vote on that, I was going to make a motion that we postpone voting on this until they do some more research, because it seems like they're putting the cart before the horse, and it just needs to have a lot more thought in it. So that's the motion I was going to make, that we postpone voting on this until they can present some additional information.
Applicant, are you partial to postponement as opposed to?
We have a motion to deny.
I'd rather give the applicant a chance to...
Yeah, I'll withdraw the motion.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion to deny has been withdrawn?
Yes.
Okay. Does the second agree?
Agreed.
Could you tell me what my options are?
It looks like they're going to deny your application, or we can postpone it, and you can go back and resubmit and...
Our first motion was to deny it. The second offering here was to...
Postpone voting on it.
Voting on it.
I believe there's a lot of concerns with this that have been discussed today, both from the board here, from residents, that we have discussed throughout the reports. And that's why there would be a motion to deny it initially. We, as a community and from leadership down to residents, have been talking about holding ourselves to higher standard, and we want to, you know, point fingers at developers as being the bad guys, this, that, and the other. And then, in my opinion, to have a project like this, while the intention is good, and I don't deny that it is needed, there are way too many questions, and it seems to be a lack of planning. And I think that we need to be leaders within our own county, on our own projects, if we want to hold other people to those same standards.
I guess I will ask if they may postpone. I have to speak with my supervisors.
Thank you, sir. Yes. May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion.
Excuse me. So Rachel, do we need a date certain?
To November, Planning Commission?
We need a date on that.
Do they need more time than one month? One month?
November 13th, I would put the date certain in there.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, November 13?
Planning Commission, yes.
Are you ready?
Yep, we're ready.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone voting on this until the November 13th meeting.
And just to clarify, so the motion to the public hearing on PDPI 2512ZG, Lake Manatee EMS GDP and rezone to the November 13th PC public hearing enable the county to submit additional information, address questions raised by the planning commissioners.
Exactly.
Motion by Mr. Elsinger, a second by Ms. Gay. Do you want to just do a hand vote? Would that be easier on staff? Already is?
The motion was made by member...
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were voting on it correct.
We have it in the minutes. It may not necessarily be my case.
Okay.
But the minutes are the official record.
So, motion passes six to zero. So, we'll see on, in November. Can we read number, item number six in the record?
Yes, sir. PDC 2501 Perrin G, sorry Perrin Z Perrin G Bradenton White Eagle East Commercial, Schroder Manti Ranch, Inc. Owner Castor Net Lease Properties LLC is the contract purchaser. James McDevitt III is your case planner. This is a rezone of approximately 3.95 acres from A General Agriculture to PDC Plan Development Commercial zoning district, generally located at the southeast corner of the intersection of State Road 64 East and White Eagle Boulevard with no address assigned in Bradenton, Manti County, Florida, approving a general development plan for up to 45,000 square feet of commercial and office, and approving a schedule of permitted and prohibited uses as voluntarily proffered by the applicant.
Thank you. Has there been any expedited communication in this? Seeing none, can we have the applicant's presentation, please?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, planning commissioners. For the record, Rhea Hunter with RVI Planning and Landscape Architecture. I'm a resident of Sarasota County, and I have been sworn. The project we have before you today is the Bradenton White Eagle East Commercial rezone. We are seeking a rezone to Plan Development Commercial with a general development plan. The property owner for this is Schroder Manatee Ranch. The applicant and developer will be Castor Net Lease Properties. Here with me today, we have a team of consultants present for any questions. Our land use attorney is Kyle Grimes with Grimes Galbano. Our civil engineer is Victor Barbosa with Adwell. Our transportation consultant is Yuri Baika with TR Transportation, and our environmental consultant is Ashley Narim with Adwell. On the screen before you is an aerial map showing the project location. The site sits right at the intersection of State Road 64 and White Eagle Boulevard in Lakewood Ranch. The site is 3.94 acres in size, and as you can see, it has direct frontage on both of these thoroughfare roadways. The future land use for the subject property, as well as the surrounding area, is urban fringe three, and the existing zoning of this property is general agricultural. The site is currently vacant, and I also wanted to note that it is within the activity center formed at the intersection of State Road 64 and White Eagle Boulevard, which are both thoroughfare roadways. There is a lot of surrounding development that has already occurred along the State Road 64 corridor. So, this site is essentially an infill development sitting in between a lot of existing commercial development. It is also in proximity to established residential neighborhoods. So, what you can see on the map, immediately to the west of the site, across White Eagle Boulevard, is an existing commercial facility, which includes a fast food restaurant and a potential car wash. Further to the east of the subject property is the Savannah Plan Development, and specifically there is a commercial component designated within that plan development, which is also being developed by Castor, and that is the site plan that you see on the screen before you. It is planned to include a daycare facility and a potential restaurant or retail facility. So, as such, and within this context, we are looking to rezon the subject property from general agricultural to plan development commercial, to continue this development pattern of commercial along the State Road 64 corridor, while also providing an opportunity for additional retail sales and services to be provided to neighboring residents. So, our request is with a general development plan, which is what you see on the screen before you. The general development plan also includes these conceptual development options, which shows potential ways in which the site will be developed. The general development plan notes access to the project, which will be provided via White Eagle Boulevard. A second cross-access is provided to the Savannah PDC, which is to the southeast of the property. And as I mentioned, this is under similar development, so that will be coordinated between the two projects. We are requesting a maximum of 45,000 square feet of commercial uses with this project, and I want to note here that accounting for the comprehensive plan designation, the project being with an activity node, as well as any reductions based on wetland impacts, the property is permitted 78,000 square feet of commercial uses. So, we are fairly proposing to limit the commercial development based on the size of the property, but also ensuring that we can provide good services to the people in the, in the area. The project also includes a proffered schedule of uses, which basically limits the uses to users that are neighborhood serving and would be supportive of the residential communities in the area, as well as the general character of Lakewood Ranch. Besides this, the general development plan also includes design and development standards. We are committing to a minimum open space requirement of 20%. Native plant communities will be preserved at a little over a quarter acre, and we are planning to preserve these along the perimeter of the project. There is existing dense vegetation, and we're planning to preserve those in order to create that kind of robust buffering from adjacent properties. Setbacks and perimeter buffering will meet or exceed the land development code. Maximum height is going to be restricted to three stories. Besides this, as I noted, the project is an infill site, and there are public facilities available right adjacent to the property. It is adjacent to two thoroughfare roadways. Besides this, utilities are available in the area with adequate capacity and infrastructure. Fire services will be provided by the East Manatee Fire Rescue District, and EMS services will be provided by Manti County. I want to bring up our transportation consultant to just walk through some of the transportation impacts of this project, and I'll be back to conclude.
Good morning. For the record, Yuri Baika with TR Transportation Consultants. I'm a licensed professional engineer, and I have been sworn in. So, we did prepare a traffic impact statement for this rezoning application, which, as Rhea mentioned, is seeking an approval for up to 45,000 square feet of commercial retail uses. As part of our traffic analysis, we first determined the number of trips this project is anticipated to generate using the ITE Trip Generation Manual, which is a required source for us to use to come up with traffic projections for projects. We then took those trips and then added them to surrounding roadway network, and analyzed the surrounding roads for their capacity. In this case, for this project, we're not anticipated to significantly impact any roadways in the area. So, the only roadways we're required to analyze were the ones we directly accessed to, which is White Eagle Boulevard and SR 64. And the results of our future level service analysis indicated both of those roadways will operate acceptable level of service in the future traffic conditions. We're also providing commercial, neighborhood commercial in close proximity to residential, and what that does is it reduces vehicles' miles traveled on surrounding roadway network by providing commercial needs into nearby residents. So, again, shorter trips for those residents to get their commercial needs equals fewer miles traveled. And another benefit of providing commercial in close to proximity residential, it encourages walking and biking as well. Now, this doesn't mean this is the only traffic study that we do for this project. Should this application be approved, we still have to go through a PSP and FSP process with the county. At that time, we will do a much more detailed traffic analysis that will evaluate operational analysis, any safety analysis, and any churn lanes that will be required or project driveways. At this time, we don't get into those details during this, during this stage. So, thank you.
Thank you, Yuri. The project is consistent with the Manti County Comprehensive Plan. As I noted, the proposed intensity is well under what is permitted for this future land use designation with the site being in an activity node. Besides this, it meets numerous additional policies of the comprehensive plan, including adding development to areas that are served by public facilities, as well as promoting development in areas consistent with the commercial locational criteria of the comprehensive plan. So, to conclude, the project is consistent, compatible, and complementary to the surrounding area. There is available infrastructure to support this project. The site is sensitively designed for protection of use from these adjacent roadways, and the project is consistent with the Manti County Comprehensive Plan and will be developed consistent with the Manti County Land Development Code. So, with that, I will conclude our presentation and respectfully request for this board's recommendation of approval.
Could you discuss the wetlands? What's happening to and in the credit and stuff?
Yes, and we do have our environmental consultant here as well to expand on it. But essentially, there is an isolated wetland on the property. It is not connected to any systems, and it is also completely invaded by exotic species. So, the quality of this wetland is extremely low. And so, in order to really create a good environmental impact, it was deemed better to mitigate and, you know, provide credits and such for wetland preservations in areas where it would be more suitable. As you can see, it's also in very close proximity to the busy State Road 64 roadway, which has probably been causing its degradation over time. With that, I can bring up our environmental consultant if there are any further questions.
No, I don't think so. Is there any questions for the applicant on this?
Just really quick. Since White Eagle, the traffic has grown exponentially. Is the, the entrance, is that gonna be a right in, right out?
So, that was something that we were actually discussing with staff right, right before this item was heard. So, there is an added stipulation E1 that talks about turning movements that staff added with the agenda update yesterday, and we expect that the entrance movements on White Eagle will be limited to the, a right-in turn only. I want to note, we are at a general development plan stage, so we've not studied the operational and safety movements of that turn, but that is the expectation that we have.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff, presentation?
Good morning again, planning commissioners. For the record, James McDevitt with Development Services, and I have been sworn. So, Rhea and the team really did a good job of presenting the projects. I'm gonna try and go through my presentation pretty quickly. We are at the intersection of State Road 64 and White Eagle Boulevard. It is approximately 3.95 acres. Current future land use is UF3. The zoning district is A General Agriculture. We are not in any overlays or special districts. The applicant is proposing to rezone to Plan Development Commercial with a general development plan for up to 45,000 square feet or .23 floor area ratio, with one access proposed along White Eagle and one cross-access to the southeast. There are a schedule of uses, there is a schedule of users, uses that are proffered by the applicant, and also stipulations proffered. And I do want to mention, Rhea mentioned this as well, they are not proposing to develop to the maximum potential of the site. The wetland impacts do reduce the maximum potential, and the applicant is requesting to have less than that maximum potential. This is the general development plan. This is what would be approved by the board if this were to be recommended, were to be approved. The applicant did provide two options or layouts. These are not set in stone. They are representative of just a developmental intent, and at final, at PSP and FSP, this would be not necessarily matching to, but gives an idea of this, the type of development style that they're looking for. There were no specific approval requests with this, so any buffering, screening, setback requirements would have to be met. The applicant did host a neighborhood workshop on May 12th through Zoom. The traffic access and potential commercial uses were the questions or concerns from the, those that attended. And I do want to mention that the applicant submitted their application and hosted their neighborhood workshop prior to a memo by our Development Services Director regarding neighborhood workshop requirements for new applications going forward. So, they are not being held to the same standard of required documents, because we are now requiring additional information. Despite that, they did provide a summary, the project, they provide the summary, the list of those that were noticed, the, those that were in attendance, and the exhibits that they provided. There is potable water infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure available, and reclaimed water available. Here is a graphic of the floodplain. The project is completely within the 1% annual flood hazard zone with a flood elevation of 24.7 to 25 feet. The site is within the Mills Creek watershed. Mills Creek watershed basin is a flood-sensitive basin, and the site is required to reduce the post-developed discharge rate to less than or equal to 50% of the predeveloped flow for the 25-year, 24-hour design rainfall. There were two transportation links that were impacted by this development, State Road 64 and White Eagle. The adopted level of service for these roadways is D, and with the project trips added to these roadways, they will function at a level C. Transportation planning provided analysis that shows that the intersection of White Eagle Boulevard and State Road 64 is deficient with background conditions. So, background conditions are trips for projects that have been approved but have not been constructed. The applicant's proposed mitigation strategy, strategies for this intersection are a traffic signal control and road widening. These strategies per transportation planning analysis are not in compliance with the comprehensive plan for this intersection. Lots of positive-negative aspects to go through. So, UF3 is anticipating these types of commercial developments. The site is surrounded by commercial on three sides. To the southwest, there's a privately-owned residential open space, then a private road, then a lake, and then a wooded area, and then another lake before you get to the nearest homes that direction. There are potable water and sewer facilities available to the site. It has frontage on an urban collector. It is, it does propose cross-access to neighboring commercial development. Again, there are no specific approvals that are requested, and there is a proximity to residential to reduce road trips. Also, no federal-listed species, no state or federally-listed species were observed on-site. Oh, too fast. The proposed mitigation strategies for the intersection are deficient from the comprehensive plan, and the, they are proposing 100% impacts to the on-site wetlands. As I mentioned before, the maximum development potential was reduced based on the wetland impact acreage. They are not proposing to develop to that number. They are proposing 45,000. The applicant has also proffered a schedule of permitted and prohibited uses attached as exhibit B. One stipulation I did want to highlight was that stipulation for those prohibited uses, prohibited and permitted uses. The application was compared with and reviewed for consistency for the comprehensive plan with these policies and with these sections of the land development code, and has been found to be other than that intersection consistent with the comprehensive plan. And as mentioned, additional review will be done at time of preliminary and final site plan. I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? We're good right now. Open it up to the public. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this project? Seeing none. Any questions for the applicant?
Just a couple of questions real quick on the, so obviously on the wetlands, I understand that. Where is the mitigating offset going to be?
Sure, and I'll bring our environmental consultant to speak to that.
Good morning, Ashley Narim with Adwell, environmental consultant. So, the, what was your question?
The mitigating offset.
So, it'll be provided through an off-site bank that's done through the Southwest Florida Water Management District, and it'll be within the same watershed basin. So, it'll provide more ecological value than, you know, if you were to try to do on-site mitigation for something this small.
So, in the same watershed basin, meaning it's gonna be in the Mill Creek watershed basin?
I'm not sure how the map for the Southwest Florida Water Management District works, but it'll be within the basin that they require, so most likely.
Okay.
Would it stay in the county?
Yes.
And then the, I think the other questions for the applicant, just kind of briefly, again, this is more on the zoning side of things. I think the traffic is, the traffic in ingress and egress is going to have to be something that's addressed. Because again, if this is just a zoning, we're not talking about a site plan or anything else yet, but it has to be addressed.
Right.
We're not gonna put a traffic signal at where there's a circle now.
Yes, so, you know, at this time, we're requesting a rezone with the general development plan, because, you know, the final uses are not determined. We are seeking a maximum of 45,000 square feet of commercial uses, which is already fairly reduced from what is permitted on this property. But, you know, ultimately, when those uses are defined, that reduction may be even further. So, at that point, you know, at FSP, when we have, you know, uses further locked in, more specifics, we will be required to do an operational analysis and a safety analysis of, you know, the specific access points. So, at that point, that information has to be provided to Manti County consistent with the land development code for approval. consistent with the Land Development Code for approval.
Any additional questions for the applicant? At this time, staff closing comments? Applicant closing comments?
Good morning, Kyle Grimes, I have been sworn. Just one additional, on the neighborhood workshop, I just want to let you know, our, our client has been continuing to be in contact with the HOA for Savannah, which is the adjacent to the southeast. So they've been working with them on not only the project they already have approved just to the east, but this one as well. So they're continuing open dialogue with the HOA. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any discussions, deliberations, or can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, for record, that motion will include the new stipulation E1 talks about access by right turn lane only. It was a bit confusing, the updated memo.
Yeah, I'm a little confused now because I thought we were talking about zoning and not the traffic turn-ins and ingress and egress, correct?
So, yes, I'll just clarify. That was a staff recommendation to put that in, that the, the exact access will be determined later, but it, it will not be, it'll be limited to only right in, but it's not a complete analysis. It's just saying they're not going to allow a right out into that roundabout intersection there. So they haven't gotten into what turn lanes will be needed or anything like that, but at the most, by that stipulation, it would be only a right in.
Okay. You're, you're still good with your motion, Mr. Zegler and Ms. Kay? Please cast your votes. Motion passes six to zero. Can we read an item number seven for the record?
PDMU 1902 Perrin G, Perrin R, travel imagination, Lakewood Ranch RV owner, LP. The case planner is CJ Mills. Amending and restating ordinance, PDMU 19-02 Perrin G, Perrin, Perrin Z, Perrin G, retaining the WPE Evers Reservoir Watershed Protection and ST Special Treatment overlays on property comprised of approximately 4.68 acres and generally located on the north side of Rangeland Parkway, approximately 703 feet east of the intersection at Lorraine Road and Rangeland Parkway, and commonly known as 14875 Rangeland Parkway, Bradenton, Manatee County. Amending the general development plan to request specific approvals and allow outdoor storage as a permitted use.
And this is not quasi-judicial?
It is quasi-judicial.
Okay, I don't see it written here. But any expert high communication? Can we have applicant's presentation, please?
Good morning, for the record, my name is Stephen Thompson. I'm an attorney with the law firm, Manasby Thompson, have been sworn, and representing the applicant. With me today, I have Logan Wyndham, who is actually the manager of this storage facility. It's kind of a awkward or unusual situation. The PDMU was approved back in, I think it was 2017. The storage facility has been operational since that point in time. The original owner had some problems, if you may, with the county and sold it to the new owner who we're representing. And since that sale in 2023, we have really endeavored to come into compliance with all of the county requirements. And really, that's why we're, we're here today. You know, we've been working very hard with the neighbors and the county in addressing the issues, and we're here today asking for what was going to be three specific approvals. But I understand we're now limited to two specific approvals, and I think the staff will be talking about that. But again, we look forward to continuing working with Manatee County, resolving the issues, getting our final construction plans, our final plans submitted. But it really requires us to get these specific approvals approved, if you may, before we can finalize our plan. But again, we've had a number of years of operation, and I think we're doing a really good job. Our neighbors have been really supportive. And I think the bottom line is we provide a really, an essential service for a lot of the residential development around here. I'll ask Logan just to talk a little bit about the operation of the storage facility, and I'll come back and talk a little bit about the specific approvals we're requesting. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Logan Wyndham. I'm the regional manager for Goodaway Storage, and I have been sworn. Just want to thank you for your time today. I just wanted to speak a little bit to the ongoing operations on the site. So the facility has been in operation since, I believe, the PDMU changed originally. The old ownership had failed to meet a lot of the milestones and, you know, regulations. Since 2023, the new ownership has been pushing the previous attorney and the engineers to go ahead and just get a full site plan put together. We have a shared fence agreement with the development to the north Cedar Mill, which is an American Homes for Rent community. That is one of the special exceptions we'll be seeking today. We do have a written fence agreement in place and just a, a letter of recommendation from their company. The second one as well is the property is managed basically self-service remotely. So we asked that there would not be an office required to be on-site. The third approval was going to be for a restroom facility, and I do believe we may have found an option to resolve that as well. So just want to thank you guys for your time, your attention, and we look forward to getting this resolved.
Thank you. Again, this property has really been very successful as a storage facility. And I guess one advantage is, you know, we've been able to learn quite a lot in the couple of years that we've been open. And one of the most important aspects of that is really working with our neighbors. And, you know, one, one of the requirements for the county is to have a fence between adjacent properties, residential properties. We took the initiative, worked with our neighbors to the north, have a fence agreement, have actually already installed a PVC fence. So there really is no requirement for a fence at that northern boundary location. Again, we took it upon ourselves to make sure that we worked with our neighbors, came up with an agreement, and it's worked out very well. So we are requesting that specific approval, not to have that fence at that location. We're also requesting a specific approval, not to have an office on the site. And I, I guess this goes a little bit older. I mean, now, every time I interview, you know, a, a new potential attorney, they want to work remotely. So remotely, what does that mean? But this also is, I mean, that's part of, you know, the way business is. And this facility is, does not need an office, does not have a manager, a manager who's on-site, and he works remotely. We have a, a gate that's remote, and all of our customers come in. There's no need for a manager on-site. There's no need for an office on-site. And we've had the experience now for the last four or five years, and it's worked very well. There has not been the need for the office on the site. Again, that would be the other specific approval that we're requesting. And again, you know, I guess the advantage of, even though that there's some problems with not submitting the plans on time, you know, our, our facility has been successful. We're working very well with the neighbors. We've not had problems with the business. We know what the issues are, and we now can address those. And I think working together with the county on the site plan to address those issues. So we're working right now to bring this property into compliance with Manatee County's. We have, again, good relations with the neighbors. We're providing really an essential service for a lot of the residential developments around there. It's a storage facility, and you get, a lot of these communities, they have restrictions that don't allow for boats or trailers. So this is a great location for that type of use. So again, we would request approval of these specific approvals so we can move forward. And again, with the ultimate goal of bringing this property into compliance, getting our, our site plan approved, and moving forward. Thank you.
And the restroom is no longer?
Well, before the, the hearing, Rachel indicated to us that they probably could not approve a specific approval for such, and we'd have to seek a variance. And then they said, well, maybe not the variance. And so now we're talking about maybe the use of a septic system there. So we're going to pursue that, and we will probably, and that's, I guess, another important element of not having the, the final site plan. We can incorporate that into the final site plan. But I think it's going to be, the, the problem with the, you know, the connection to the sewer system, it's about more than, it's about 1,000 feet away. But this facility doesn't generate any waste. Absolutely, we, we've had porta-potties, and the porta-potty guy comes here a couple of weeks, he says, you know, the amount of wastewater is de minimis. And the problem with, you know, putting a force main and a lift station, it doesn't, it doesn't function. And it's actually worse, but we do have to have, you know, under the county. So we are looking at that possibility, and we'll know hopefully before we get to county commission.
Any additional questions for that?
I have a question. Have there been any security issues on the site?
No.
Given that there's no office or any onsite management?
It's been very safe.
So there is a fence around the hall?
Yes, ma'am.
And how tall is that? So individual, individuals who have, are storing their property there have their own access key or something to get into the gate?
Yes, ma'am, we have restricted gate access codes. Each customer gets their own code, cameras, license plate readers, yeah, and fenced completely around.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That was part of my question. So there is a fence on the eastern portion of the property?
Not currently, but we will be installing it per the FSP.
Okay, so it's not completely fenced in. Okay, all right. And the second one, the two open code enforcement violations, is that from the old owner or the new owner?
Um, so there was, there was a bit of, I mean, you call it what you will, but the, the previous attorney that was representing us, obviously, was working along with the engineers, and there were just a few fumbles along the way. So, yeah, basically, all of these issues will get complied with now, now that we know exactly what we're up against.
But I think that all came up under the old owner, not the new owner. When the new owner came in, realized there were problems, started addressing them immediately.
Thank you. A staff report?
CJ Mills with staff, and I have been sworn. I'll go through this fairly quickly. They did a pretty detailed job there. This is the location, the aerial of it. There's some change in the future land use category at one point, and also, obviously, it's approved for PDMU right now. It got approved, I believe, in 2019. The, it's an existing use, so it's permitted within the future land use category. It's permitted within the zoning district. There are a couple overlays, but with the two specific approval requests right now, that is not contradicting them, or they don't really come into play. Again, this is just the overall general development plan, not a lot of detail there. They have the access on Rangeland Parkway. The two specific approval requests, one to remove the office, and the other to basically have that shared fence agreement. It has potable water, and obviously, the wastewater, they're going to be doing the septic. And there's no reclaimed count, or county reclaimed, reclaimed county water infrastructure in place right now. It is within the 1% annual flood hazard zone without an established elevation. It's just the portion where there used to be a pond. It's in the Braden River watershed. It's required to reduce the post-developed discharge rate to less than or equal to 25% of predeveloped flow from 25-year, 24-hour design rainfall, and needs to provide 100%, 150% water quality treatment. Again, the use is already permitted, and there's not going to be any change with the specific approval requests, and the roadway is currently operating above the adopted level of service. Some of the positive aspect is that, like they're saying, they really are just trying to get, become compliant with our LDC requirements. Negative, some negative aspects are the specific approvals to deviate from the LDC. The original project was approved for agricultural, residential, and the outdoor storage uses. Currently, it's only operating under outdoor storage. It's not really something that we can try to, there's no benefit to try to rezone to a single planned development zoning district at this point. And the gate is misrepresented on the, or it's misrepresented on the GDP. It's actually showing it indented into the property when currently is out. We've discussed with them as well, and at the time of final site plan, they will make that correct. And that is the mitigating measure there. And other than that, the request can be found to be consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan and the applicable review standards of Land Development Code. And I will be here if you have any questions.
Any questions for staff? Not seeing any, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Opening up for public comment? Closing public comment? Any questions for applicant before we go to closing comments? Staff closing comments? Applicant closing comments?
We're good, thank you.
May I get a motion, please?
So it's a motion to approve with the two?
Yes, sir. So we have a motion by Mr. Zegler and a seconded by Ms. Kaba. Please cast your votes. Motion passes six to zero. Is there any comments for, from the commissioners on any issues? Okay. Last case. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.